Good evening, and we'll call the Tuesday, March 6, 2018 meeting of the Everett Planning Commission order, beginning with the roll call, please.
Chair Holland.
Here.
Commissioner Tisdale.
Here.
Commissioner Lavra.
Here.
Commissioner McGinn.
Commissioner Yanisak.
Here.
Commissioner Lark.
Here. Have the commissioners have an opportunity to review the February 20, 2018 minutes? And if so, any comments or corrections or motions?
I do have a comment.
Okay.
On the motion that I made about adopting the electrical fence, I guess, resolution, I think the second half of that sentence is a little not quite what I said. So, I said not adopt, let's see, not add the international standard or international code unless it has not been adopted by the city, since if it's already adopted, my assumption was we didn't need to reference it again.
Any other comments or corrections? Any motions on the correction proposed?
Do we have to accept the correction and then the minutes? Is that the proper procedure?
I believe if you were to make a motion to amend as proposed, then I think we could...
Okay, then I move we accept the minutes as amended.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, call for the vote.
Commissioner Lark.
Yes.
Commissioner Yanisak.
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Lavra.
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdale.
Yes.
Chair Holland.
Yes. Any committee reports from the commissioners this evening? Seeing none. Any staff comments?
No reports, other than to just say that we'll be meeting again two weeks from tonight on the 20th.
Okay, thank you. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience who would like to address the planning commission that's on items that are not on the agenda this evening. Seeing none. If you do intend to testify this evening on any of the three items that we have on here, please make sure to fill out one of the speaker sheets and get it to Kathy, please. So, with that, we'll turn it over to the Everett Transit Long Range Plan update.
Good evening, Sabrina Popa, Everett Transit, and this is the third time that I come before you regarding the long-range plan, so thank you for allowing me to come and wrap up our process here and give you some highlights of what the draft plan presents. And first of all, I'd like to point out some things that I brought with me and I have available on the table behind me. One is a copy of the draft plan, which is also available online. The copy that you have also includes the appendices that are available online, but I've preserved a few trees by not printing all of those for everyone, but definitely can if there's a request. There's also a copy of the survey, which is the survey that we have online, asking for comments and thoughts on the draft plan. And the third item I have is the flyer that we've been circulating to let everybody know. So, if you would like to present those to any meetings, neighborhood, associations, your neighbors, please feel free to grab some tonight. I also have the newest bus schedule book, which commemorates the 125 years that the city is celebrating, and along with the city transit, so I thought that would be fun to show you. The presentation that I have today pretty much focuses on the financial aspect and the implications of what we've studied. And the scope of the long-range plan, as a reminder, is our 20-year plan that evaluates the direction of future service that Everett Transit should provide in light of the growth in population and employment that is projected for Everett. Alongside with that, we'd like to, we took a look at the financial implications of that growth and of our current level of service. And we also wanted to establish some standards of service in terms of productivity of existing service and how we evaluate routes on an ongoing basis, as well as implementation of growth in the areas that will, where growth will happen. We plan to look at this plan every five years and update it accordingly. A quick look of our service today. We have about 2 million trips yearly on our fixed route service with 6,500 weekday boardings, and we have a total of 42 buses currently on our fleet, in our fleet. Our pair transit service provides about 120,000 trips a year with 350 weekday daily boardings, and we have 29 vans currently in our fleet. In our financial assessment of our current level of service, which we call the baseline costs and revenue, in this graph, as you see, the costs are in blue, and the dotted line is our revenue. So, at our current level of service, our operating costs, which in this measurement also includes fleet replacement requirements, which for the purpose of providing safe service, we needed to include in here, we will not be sustainable in the next few years, with our costs exceeding our revenues as early as 2020. Not included in this graph is also a consideration that we've been talking about for a while, which is an expanded operation space in order to accommodate an increase in fleet size and to consolidate our pair transit and fixed route operations into one base. Currently, there are two different locations. That base is estimated at about $30 million. So, in light of that financial assessment, our scope broadened a little bit for this plan, because we do need to plan for growth and what the future will bring, but we also need to be short-term sustainable and then figure out additional revenue sources to sustain that growth, because that growth in the next 20 years that will support population is significant, will require significant revenues. So, we wanted to also focus on short-term sustainability. So, we've asked our consultants to put together a sustainable network that will allow us to address some of those financial constraints, and this is what that network would look like with, on this map, the yellow represents 45 to 60-minute service, the orange 30-minute service, and the red 15 to 20-minute service. So, the darker the line, the more frequent the service. In blue, you also see the regional transit provided in Everett with Swift, with the Swift line, and the sound transit service to Everett Station. So, for this sustainable network, if we are, our calculations and projections in terms of ridership looked 20 years out, just so that the calculations are consistent, although we do hope that we will not be implementing the sustainable network for the 20 years, but we would have a growth network. But, just to give you an idea of the potential ridership, this network would have the same amount of ridership as our current network. That's because future growth is concentrated in the denser areas alongside transit corridors, which will have more service. The wait time would decrease, and the percent of population covered would not really change that much, just because, again, population increase will happen more along the main corridors, which will continue to have service. In the sustainable network, the financial analysis that accompanied it, which showed that, and again, it includes our capital fleet replacement minimum requirements. So, this would have, would show us sustainability and the inflection point of cost and revenues out to 2030. So, it would ensure our short-term sustainability further along than our current levels of service. And we would plan to implement this sustainable network in, the earliest would be March of 2019. That would include about a 10% reduction in service hours and a decrease in fleet size of about six vehicles, so that we address the capital fleet replacement requirements. We would look at all of our routes and evaluate service based on ridership. We would look at stop level. So, we would have to produce a more detailed analysis of route-by-route implementation of this network. And we will follow our regular service change outreach in its implementation, which we anticipate sometime in July, August of this year. In March of 2019 is also when the new Seaway Transit Center will open, so we will have more restructuring of service coinciding with that hub opening, which we're very excited about, and the green line offered by Community Transit on Airport Road. Going back to how our city will grow in terms of density, this is, these are the two maps that we were looking at from 2015 levels to 2040. As you can see, the denser areas are definitely downtown Everett and alongside North Broadway, and again, more in the south and by Airport Road, Casino Road, and that stretch of Evergreen. So, as part of this plan, we went out to the public on two phases of outreach. One was in June and one was in October. In our June phase, we asked the public a few questions, and we wanted to reach both riders and non-riders. We talked to over 1,000 people, and we asked them priorities and values in terms of what Everett Transit should focus on. And those three options were local service, high-capacity transit, which is bus rapid transit, swift service type, and commuter routes. And what we've heard is that we should still be focusing on providing local service. The other questions focused on why is Everett Transit important to you? And the number one was congestion relief, which I don't think was a surprise there. And the second one was that it helps transit-dependent folks with their mobility needs and environmental benefits. The what do you value most about transit question had five options and asked people to rank them in terms of what they value most. And the first two are frequency and coverage, which is typically what people value. They want, current riders tend to want more frequency on their routes, and people and the public in general are more concerned with overall coverage. The third priority was keeping our fares low, then span of service, how early, how late we operate, and then the comfort and safety of our passengers. After that outreach period, we took those, focus on local service, with the top two being frequency and coverage. We went in October, in our October outreach, we presented two network options to the public. They assumed the same level of increase in service hours, about a 24% increase from today's current levels, but one allocated those numbers and concentrated on frequency of service and one in coverage. So, the public feedback on that was more leaning toward the frequency options. 59% of folks were either very satisfied or somewhat satisfied with this option, and 54 were more somewhat satisfied or very satisfied with the coverage. It was not an either-or question, so it just asked how satisfied are you with these two options? And then what are your top three priorities? And the three that came up at the top were off-peak frequency, peak frequency, and then how close, how short of a walk it is to the bus stop. So, those were the three. In each of these phases, we had over 400 surveys returned to us. So, based on that, we developed a growth network plan that took into account the feedback and added some, not combined the two networks, but focused more on the frequency and added back some of the coverage. And the growth network plan would look something like this. With a potential ridership of 17,000 daily riders, wait time of under 10 minutes, and the percentage of population covered would be less within a quarter mile than our current system, but overall, within a half-mile coverage would be about the same. Our assumption is that in a very frequent network, similar to Light Rail or Swift, people are willing to walk a little bit farther to their bus stop in order to have the service. And the financial implications of this growth network are reflected in this graph, which again accounts for also fleet replacement. And as you can see, there's a significant gap in the out years if this was to be implemented, and it does assume a gradual implementation. But it does reflect a 24% increase in service hours, and our fleet, an increase to 49 to 50 vehicles. To compare, the three lines that I just showed you, the blue is our baseline, our current level of service, the orange is the sustainable network, and the green is the growth option. So, that leaves us to some needs that need to be addressed, and those are cost savings and revenue options that we'll be looking at in the near future to close the gap and to have us be more sustainable. Those include the increase in fares, implementation of the sustainable network that will achieve significant cost savings. Looking at our pair transit policy, which currently exceeds the federal requirements for service, we'll be looking at additional fixed route service restructures. In the past, we've eliminated holiday service. There's other agencies that have eliminated Sunday service. Those types of service restructures that, options at least that we can evaluate, other operational efficiencies internally, additional grant sources, private partnerships, and exploring what our sales tax capacity can provide. We're currently at 6/10ths of 1% in terms of what we collect in the city of Everett. Our next steps in this process are the adoption of the long-range plan, which we hope to go through in April or May of this year. Then we'll proceed with the implementation of a sustainable network through our established outreach process. The implementation will take place in March of 2019, and our outreach later this year. And then we'll, over the next couple of years, we'll evaluate cost savings options in our agency. This is our project timeline. We started it January of 2017 and hope to bring it to a close in the spring. Our, we will have a question-and-answer session tomorrow night on Everett Station at 6:30, and we'll also be at the Transportation Advisory Committee and Council of Neighborhoods later this month. The survey is available through March 30 on our website, and I can answer any questions that you may have for me at this time. I know it's a lot of information, and it's a lot to go through, so, yes.
So, I saw on one of the, if you go back a few slides, increased fares. Yes, so, one of the cost savings and revenue options that were put out there were private partnerships. Seattle's exploring a partnership with the on-demand bus service, Chariot. What has Everett done to start looking to the on-demand mass transit field?
So, part of this plan was looking at partnerships with Lyft or Uber. Other agencies have done that in the past or in other areas of the country. I don't think we are quite ready to do that yet, because we need to get our level of service to a sustainable level, so to pay into those partnerships, to fill in those gaps, is a little problematic at this moment. But we are aware and we are going to, in our future updates, see how we can further explore those.
All right, thank you. I just want to point in the record, there was a great study that was done by MIT that showed high-capacity bus, a bus fleet, well, not a high capacity, but a moderate-capacity bus fleet of 3,000 vehicles could offset 13,000 individual taxis. So, this is just, it's something that's worth looking into. I'm highly encouraged in the next five years that this, that this technology and these systems of operations are looked at and examined.
Definitely. Thank you.
Good for you.
Yes, I was curious what policy adjustments were discussed for pair transit. Were there specifics?
Currently, in order to qualify for pair transit service, the federal requirements are ADA eligibility. And for the city of Everett, seniors 65 and over qualify regardless of their ADA eligibility. So, currently, if you're over 65, in the city of Everett, you can qualify for pair transit service, and we provide that service to city of Everett residents. In addition, the other requirements have kind of the shed of where you would qualify for service being 3/4 of a mile from a bus stop would be the area covered. So, if you live within 3/4 of a mile and you cannot, and you're ADA eligible, then you would qualify for service, and we would provide service in that area. And right now, we provide service all over Everett. We also don't keep account of the span of service, so as long as our fixed route buses are in service, we provide pair transit service everywhere in Everett, regardless of whether that route in that area ends at 8 o'clock. If a route within the city ends at 10, then we provide service everywhere until 10. So, those policies are something that we could look at in order to have some cost saving for that, for that division. Yeah.
When you guys did all this modeling, where did you put in Uber and Lyft and, you know, ride share and that stuff that will have a more active role in the city of Everett in the next five years?
So, in terms of modeling, we didn't include those numbers in our hours, because those are just service hours that we provided. But we did, for example, in our sustainable network, we looked at the areas where we would, we would say there are, that will present gaps, as in North Colby. We currently have a Route 17 that travels on that road, but they're mostly single-family homes, and we assume that lack of coverage will be filled in by Uber and Lyft, because the growth in population is less, the potential for growth is less in that area, and the income level is higher. So, we didn't, we didn't include those exact calculations in our modeling, but we, we were mindful that we keep coverage in those areas that wouldn't be able to necessarily afford those services in the future.
There was an article not too long ago about what the impact that those two have had in Boston. I don't know if you're able to read that, but it's, it's not working the way that it should work, and there are actually more cars in downtown than less cars, because that last mile, so the folks are saying, if I gotta Uber and ride the bus, I'm just gonna Uber.
Yeah.
And, so, you talk about, again, I'm on this modeling, what, what did you do? You've shown us a couple things of how you get sustainable. So, your, your rate structure, would it have to double or triple or?
The rate for the fares or?
Would, what would they have to do to bring those lines?
The, some of the cost revenue, the revenue options that we have, which includes fares, are not covering the whole gap. So, the options, I think, we're looking at increasing fares by 25 to 50 cents next year. That is, let me see if I find that.
And so, what does that do to the, what does that do to the gap? Does it, does it just fill a gap, or does it move it out?
It helps in the sustainable term. It will not help to fill the gap that we need to have a growth network. That gap is really high.
But then you mentioned an increase or looking at the 6/10ths.
Mm-hmm.
So, what would you have to do to the 6/10ths? Would it have to go to 1.2 or 2.3 or?
So, currently, our limitation is 9/10ths. Community transit is at 1.2, so it's double what our, our sales tax percentage is. Definitely, an increase of 3/10ths for us would mean an increase of 50% of revenue, so you'll see that line increasing proportionately if that was to be applied.
Out of curiosity, so the baseline revenue comes all, all from fares, or is that total revenue for the entire?
Total revenue. That includes sales, tax, and fares.
So, what was the recapture rate then for the fares? Like, is it, how much of our, the overall revenue structure comes from fares?
I want to say about 7%.
Okay.
Is covered by fares currently.
And if I could just piggyback, has there been any other studies done? Because I know, like, I know Lime Bike down in Seattle, bikes that operate in a certain model is Car2Go, are newer, but has there been any modeling done to see what kind of partnership can be done by, with the on-demand bicycles and buses, so we can close the first-mile, last-mile gap?
Not as part of this process. We are, I know the discussion has been brought up to the Transportation Advisory Committee, and it was evaluated by the city last year. So, we're, we're going to wait and see where those agencies are coming in. We are not the ones directly in contact or in contract with them. But yeah, I haven't also heard of a big push toward them either, but I've heard enough interest to bring them over just to see at least a pilot, to see how they would do in Everett.
Sabrina, when you do your modeling, do you, you look, let's just go to Everett Community College, it had 22,000, 24,000. Now, we're at 26,000, 27,000, plus you got 1,000 or so over at WSU. Is there a way to capture, how many of those students are riding the bus? I mean, have you seen, is it, let's just say, one by 1,000, just for a number?
Yeah.
The enrollment, do you see an in?
We see some usage. We have numbers on terms of their ORCA card usage, for example, because students have a discounted ORCA card, and we see, I think the number is around 800 to 900 that are currently out of 19,000. So, there is a lot of potential there for more bus ridership. We also have Skagit and Island serving that corridor, as well as Community Transit, so there's a lot of bus service already there to fill that need. And Community Transit is also planning an additional bus rapid transit line in the future from Marysville along this corridor. So, I think the capacity is there. We've also worked with Everett Community College to develop a map with all of the bus times that serve the college printed on the map, including Skagit, Island, Community, Everett, so that students just have a quick guide, and we've done that for Boeing as well. So, we're, we're putting in efforts to promote transit to students, definitely.
I applaud you for that, because that, that's, that's how, that's how we're moving people. I mean, I don't care if it's a green bus or a red bus.
Yeah.
Need to get where I'm going and...
As part of our outreach, we went out to Everett Community College on both occasions, and we've had the most surveys filled out there. So, students definitely had a voice in this process.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Sabrina?
I just want to say how excited I am about some of the bus bulbs going in on Broadway. That's really exciting. Not only that, though, I hear that artwork and parks are going to be kind of brought into the design conversation around those, so I really want to applaud, you know, Everett Transit for that, so thank you.
Thank you. That project will be done by middle of next year, so construction will start this year.
Great.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much, Sabrina.
Yeah.
Is there anyone in the audience that wanted to address the planning commission on this topic this evening? Seeing none. We'll turn it over to Mr. Stallheim for the off-street parking.
Jeff is gonna hit the magic button here for us. David Stallheim, Long Range Planning Manager, and first introductions, I want to recognize Ryan Sasser, City Engineer, is here to help answer some questions about parking and question some of what planners do here. So, that's, that's his role tonight. And then also, Dave Tyler was one of the staff planners that worked on major portions of this and did some of the research on this. So, Dave is here tonight, along with Niels Tigerson, and so they've all had roles in that. So, depending on your depth of questions tonight, we may be turning to any of those experts here tonight, so. So, we're here to talk about off-street parking. So, the off-street parking kind of started a little bit as part of the Metro Everett Plan, but this is a proposed chapter that's citywide, so I want to make sure that people understand that this is not just about Metro Everett, although there's specific standards in Metro Everett, but this is a proposed for citywide. So, but, speaking of Metro Everett, one of the first things to do is kind of look at, when we looked at Metro Everett and the policy issues, is that, you know, for... when we looked at Metro Everett and the policy issues is that, you know, 40% of Metro Everett actually is in, in public right-of-way. So it's a large portion of the area. Another 15% is in surface parking. And so right now, we have 55% of the Metro Everett of about a square mile, either in public right-of-way or in surface parking within that area. And as we look at downtown, there's over 1,800 on-street stalls and there's over 6,300 off-street stalls within the downtown area with three major garages. And this is based on the inventory that Ryan helped oversee back in 2015 as part of a downtown parking update. So as we drafted the off-street parking, some of the principles that we looked at is first off, is looking at it being a little bit more market-driven and flexible regulations. And market-driven and, I know we have two new commissioners, actually three probably commissioners from, when we did this presentation in February of last year, there are some cities that actually are going to having no off-street parking requirements at all unless the market dictate what, what happens. So, you know, it's pretty hard to think that someone's gonna build a new multifamily and not provide any parking because they're probably not gonna have any tenants for it. So, so same thing with commercial spaces that they're gonna look at the market. So, so that's part of the idea of market-driven is looking at letting the market drive it and really look at what the public interest is and providing some flexible regulations. Second is particularly when we talked about Metro Everett is creating inviting places for us. And when we have 15% of the area in surface parking, it starts causing some potential issues. As Sabina just teed up a little bit, is looking at what can we do with off-street parking to help encourage mode shift, shifting travel patterns to these alternative modes of travel like transit, bicycles, walking, or some of the shared services. Integrating with public parking management, every time we talk about off-street parking, one of the conversations comes up, well, what is that gonna do to the public parking? And so the downtown parking study that was done first in 2008, updated in 2015, and how that fits within that public parking strategy, along with into the residential areas is a critical component to this. And finally, is looking at change. I was just, as I was walking here, thinking about that 12 years ago, I actually had a dial-up modem. And now, how much I can find at the, you know, just on my phone and all the answers to things. And so same thing is happening in the transportation world. So light rail's coming here, the transit enhancements down the road, autonomous vehicles, and are changing socioeconomic conditions. So both millennials and the aging of the population are looking at things differently. Some of the trends that Sightline Institute has just put out kind of reinforced this. So right now, very few electric vehicles in the fleet and very few that are using vehicle sharing with the smartphones. And right now, we don't have any autonomous vehicles out on the, on the highways. But that's gonna change, you know, going up to about 20% use of all those areas. And in the future, 90% is gonna be electric vehicles, vehicle sharing, or autonomous vehicles. And so it's really gonna change things as we see it. And so part of the off-street parking conversation is to recognize that things are changing and try to be, at least, keep up with that curve. And so in 10 years, what they see is that urban mobility will be transformed. And so the, the transportation as a service miles will be a significant portion really of, of the urban mobility in the future versus you having your, your own individual ownership and driving miles is that somehow you're gonna have other vehicle options for your mobility. As part of that, when we think about parking and travel, all this is part of also greenhouse emissions, is reducing vehicle miles traveled and the impact, beneficial impact on greenhouse emissions being slashed as a result of that. And then as we get back to the idea of, of parking, is that all these changes starts freeing land from parking cars. And so the more that we have car sharing, the more we have alternative modes of travel, the more that we can free the land from parking cars. Of course, one of the transformative things that we're looking at is the ST3 plan, which is to get light rail to Everett by 2036, connecting, going from Tacoma to Everett along the spine, and the last connection on the north end from Linwood to Everett by 2036. So there has been a couple studies in the recent years that are specific to what we're looking at here. First off, it's actually probably not all that recent, but back in 2013, the city entered into a compact with other Puget Sound communities called the Growing Transit Community Strategy. And the actions that they had in that, that recommendations that the city signed on to is to look at shared parking, flexible market-driven parking regulations, reduced or no parking for special populations, limits on the maximum amount of parking, and transportation demand management. In 2015, King County with Fair and Peers study and Metro did a study called the Right-Sized Parking. And so although this is King County, it actually included all the suburban areas around there. So it was a wide mix. It's not just Seattle there. But one of the things that they found was that the independent variables for parking utilization are the things that we actually kind of have in the, in the draft here is that transit frequency affects parking needs, percent of affordable housing units, people that are lower incomes don't have as many cars, how many, the occupied bedroom count and intensity, population and jobs, the size of residential space, the larger residential units typically will have more cars in their fleet, what the rent is, and then the parking price relative to the rent. These were some of the conditions that they found influenced the parking demand, particularly for multifamily. In 2016, another study came out looking at transit mixed-use projects in Redmond. This was a mixed-use in a transit-oriented development project. And what they found was that the mode choices were really different in this really intense mixed-use development project. Is that there's 1.7 more trips made by walking and three times more trips made by transit when we really concentrated development in a mixed-use building than what the regional average was. And so the numbers were much higher when we have concentrated development. And the other thing that they found is that the trip and parking generation manual that is commonly used for developing all the parking standards, which is the ITE, International Transportation Engineers, Traffic Engineers?
Close enough.
Something like that. Something engineers, something international, I think. It says 37.4% of the trips of what the manual estimated. And so quite often is that, that manual was originally developed with suburban locations in mind and not with urban locations. And I think over time, that will change, but right now, it really hasn't caught up to the changes in urban areas. And so that's what they found in 2016. And that, the residential parking in this mixed-use development was 65% of what the ITE manual said would happen at the peak. As mentioned earlier, is that downtown parking did the 2007 and 2008 study, and then that was updated in 2015 and 16. Three things that were looked at really was the update to the parking utilization level, evaluate the effectiveness of current time limits, and update the downtown parking strategies. Some of the current parking management strategies is looking at time limits between 30 and 90 minutes, public and private off-street facilities for longer stays, particularly the monthly parkers, enforcement, what about the residential neighborhood permit program, which is right outside of the central business district, and public transit options as part of the management strategies for parking. One of the nice things that, that I find helpful was one of this, this triangle that they had is understanding occupancy. Is that when you get to 85% occupancy of a street with, with cars, it starts feeling like the, the supply is, is constrained. And so people think that there's no parking spaces available. And so the sweet spot really is kind of that yellow area or the oranges area in the middle. The 70 to 84% range is really what's good for the on-street parking and also off-street parking. It's kind of the same, same thing for occupancy for cars is that when it's too low, then people think it's vacant, it's kind of a dead space. But when it's too high, then people think there's no parking available. So, so this, there's a whole bunch of things and we, we did this, the full study with you guys back in 2000, last year in February. And the whole study is available online. The links to this are available in your packet, the on-street parking utilization. But what was found was that 38 of the 143 blocks were up to that 85% constrained value. And so it did identify that it can make certain areas seem full in the on-street parking utilization. One of the, the clear observations that they had when they did the survey was that there was a lot of, a lot of the cars, there's 360 vehicles that were moving cars during the day, 380 that were parked longer than four hours, so over 850 cars total or about 40% of all on-street stalls were likely occupied by employees that were moving their cars or parking longer than, than allowed under the law. So, so one of the issues is really is, was enforcement of the on-street parking. And so looking at some of the solutions for that, enforcement, looking at alternative travel modes and providing some affordable off-street parking, and looking at down the road, some paid on-street parking. So again, starting to charge for parking would probably start changing some of those, those patterns there. Two years ago, the consultant recommendations was to standardize the time limits throughout downtown to 90 minutes, additional parking enforcement personnel, acquiring up-to-date enforcement technology, and appointing a parking advisory committee. Ryan can probably answer some of the questions regarding this. I think that the first three, the first two have been largely done. I think number three is in, in motion or in study, and I think the last one, I think it's to the Transportation Advisory Committee is what is happening with that. But Ryan can answer some of those questions. So with that background, I want to walk through some of the, the draft standards for off-street parking. Again, the general strategy was, was really is to follow the Growing Transit Communities compact back from 2013. So things like shared parking, the flexible and market-driven regulations, reduced parking for special populations, and transportation demand management. One of the things that we do not have in these recommendations at this time is limits on the maximum amount of parking. So some jurisdictions, they'll say what the minimum is, but they also have a maximum and we have not included any maximum limits in our draft. One of the other objectives is to look at code streamlining. And so when we drafted the Table 34-1, we made the land uses simpler. We, like when we went through Chapter 19 two weeks ago, we have reduced 146 different uses down to 38. One of the things that this will do is make conversion of buildings easier. It's a process where quite often when we have tenant conversions, people change office to a dry cleaner and all of a sudden, dry cleaner has a different standard than office and, you know, things like that. And so trying to make things a little bit more generic and so making those conversations about conversion easier on both the applicant and on staff. One of the things we've done is tried to put all the parking and access standards in one chapter. Right now, what you see in our draft, Chapter 34, is scattered throughout the development code right now. It's in different chapters of Title 19 and different titles of the Everett Municipal Code. And so what we're trying to do is bring all those together and so we'll have an amending ordinance later too that will amend all those other chapters if, if Planning Commission Council is happy with this draft and so we'll have an amending ordinance. One thing we also are doing is moving some of the design standards to Public Works, to the City Engineer. City Engineer has administrative authority to adopt design standards, so things like parking configuration, size of stalls, you know, access width, some other things like that, are really kind of detail engineering things. And so rather than codify that and not have the ability to address changes as, as necessary, a lot of these design standards would move to Public Works and to the City Engineer. Have a lot of new flexibility proposed in here. First off is some multifamily reductions. We do have new Metro Everett parking zones, proposing to exempt buildings that are on the Everett Historic Register from parking requirements if they convert uses in there. Any building before 1957 wouldn't require new parking to be a part of that. 1957 is when basically the first zoning code for Everett came into play, so that's the key behind that. We have provisions for shared parking. So in essence, two uses could share parking even if that shared parking is not on the same property. And so if they have parking that is within walking distance, that we allow that. And so this is the first time this kind of program would be offered in Everett, but it's common in most jurisdictions. We do allow parking study to further reduce parking demand, so that would go to City Engineer and the Planning Director if they provided a parking study to show that. And then we also have drafted standards for alternatives to parking cars are offered. So things like the car sharing and bicycles and some other things like that that would allow for reduction of required parking. So when we look at some of the maps in here, I want to point out something. So right now, in our downtown, our B3 zone, Central Business District, the area that's in pink or salmon color up on the screen there, we don't have any parking requirements for non-residential development. In our draft, we have new parking area boundaries. We have Parking Area A, so this purple outline. And so what you see is that we have an expansion into the Everett Station area where light rail and existing Everett Station is, and also including some of the area in the Lower Hewitt Avenue area down the Bucks Cafe area. But you also see us pulling back a little bit on some of the not, so we would require some parking in some of these areas that are outside of the current, that are in the current B3 zone. Some of that is to protect some of the residential neighborhoods here again from the spillover. If you don't provide parking in there, then they'll start parking within the residential neighborhoods. And so this is, this is a change for some of those areas and kind of want to highlight that as a change for discussion purposes. And when we did the draft plan, and this is in the plan, we have basically two different areas. So we have Parking Area A and everything left in Metro Everett is Parking Area B and this affects some of the parking standards drafted in there. Wanted to show, currently in code, we have Parking Area A and B as well, and this is for multifamily infill projects. And so if I just toggle between these two, you see Parking Area A, which is a little bit tighter area, Parking Area A here gets out into the residential neighborhood. So we, we definitely have different, different areas, different boundaries between these, these two. But this one for Parking Area A and B is only for different standards for multifamily infill. It's, it's not related back to that drawing I had for the B3, the Central Business District. For some of these parking reduction things, we do have transportation demand management standards in here. So anywhere where parking is reduced would require a transportation demand management plan. And so even the areas that don't require parking at all, you're still gonna have to do a transportation demand management plan to identify the strategies to reduce vehicle trips and promote transportation alternatives. And so we want to make sure that as we reduce parking demand, that we're actually trying to also make sure that these strategies are implemented. The TDM plan would require compliance. We have drafted the authority to charge fees to monitor. Quite often, in our internal discussions, what we found is that it's easy to get the plan first done perhaps, but then it's a little bit more challenging to monitor it and ensure compliance over time. And so we did have something there to say we could charge fees to monitor that plan. That would have to be adopted, I believe, by Council, by ordinance to adopt the fees, but being clear in here that we may charge fees for that. We do have bicycle parking provisions in this draft. This is a new requirement, so there are no required bicycle parking currently in the city. For non-residential development, we'd have to have proposing one bike space per, every 12 parking spaces, up to 20 maximum. And you'd have to do it even if you don't have to put in any off-street parking. So again, even downtown where you don't have to put any parking in for non-residential, new development would be required to put in some bicycle parking as a result of this draft proposal. as a result of this draft proposal here. In residential development, we propose to have bicycle parking of one space per every two units and one per four for senior housing. So in the multifamily, we have, uh, some scenarios where we have the reduction, again, kind of going back to the, uh, right-sized parking, uh, based on different characteristics. Uh, I think we've walked through some of this before, but, so the first one is, uh, I want to look at, uh, multifamily in the, uh, Parking Area As, our Metro A, uh, our standards, and so that's kind of the tighter area. We, um, a little bit, uh, less than one parking space per unit for studios, to one, uh, one per one for a one-bedroom, and, uh, more as you get up to two-bedroom and higher. So in some respects, for the, if you had a higher bedroom count in, in, uh, uh, Parking Area A of Metro, you actually have more parking requirement under this draft under current regulations. Uh, but it, the typical market here is more of the studio and one-bedroom, so the typical market, you're going to see perhaps a reduction, uh, in, in the parking requirement. So as, uh, as an example here is that, uh, in the Metro Area A, if we have forty, uh, studio units, the parking required would be thirty-four, and if they happen to be two-bedroom, uh, thirty units, there'd be thirty-six, so you'd end up being one per one, uh, so there'd be seventy parking places that would be required, uh, under this, this draft. And, uh, the area that's outside of that core, the Metro Area B, uh, the same seventy units, it would have a little bit higher parking ratio for the studios, uh, and so the numbers change a little bit. So rather than, uh, in, in the previous one was a one-to-one relationship, now all of a sudden, we have eighty-two parking spaces required for seventy. So again, trying to have, uh, less parking in the core, we'll hopefully have more walking bicycles, access, uh, future to light rail, transit, things like that, uh, so less parking required. As you get outside of Metro Everett, uh, the parking goes up a little bit more, and again, this is on the higher, uh, uh, bedroom counts, and so you would get up to the same, uh, scenario here of forty studio, one-bedroom and thirty-two-bedroom, you'd end up having eighty-five, uh, parking spaces required. So in the, in the draft, we have, uh, three different options is to reduce, uh, parking, uh, based on resident characteristics, transportation characteristics, and development characteristics. So if we looked at the resident characteristics outside of Metro Everett, um, and these characteristics are based on extremely low income, uh, low income or senior-low income, so extremely-low income is thirty percent of very median income, they would have half the parking required, uh, as a re- as a market rate, uh, unit would. And so, uh, the same project that would, uh, normally require eighty-five spaces would require, uh, forty-three spaces in a very-low-income, uh, project. Low-income, uh, project would, uh, be fifty-five units, and six, senior-low income, a little bit higher income, uh, would be at sixty-four units. And so reducing the, uh, parking based on those resident characteristics. Mentioned this before, but I want to say it again, is that, uh, we have three different options, and they're not, they're not additive. And so you get to choose a path, and you can choose Path A, Path B, or Path C, but you can't choose all three. So you can either choose resident characteristics, uh, or in this, the transportation alternatives or the development. So, uh, it's only one of these paths that you can choose. This one, the transportation alternatives, uh, kind of getting back to Sabina's about the transit, I think, uh, one of the things I noticed in the sustainable model, I think there's only one routed, uh, fifteen-to-twenty-minute service, uh, through Everett, although we have also SWIFT Transit. And so that's your, uh, three, uh, trips per hour, um, three to four trips per hour. So those that are within walking distance of a bus stop would be able to reduce their, um, uh, parking, uh, needs by twenty-five percent or a point seven-five reduction factor. So eighty-five spaces would require sixty-four, uh, where there's frequent transit. Uh, if it's less frequent transit, you could get down to seventy-two, and if you did a transportation demand management plan, you could get down to seventy-seven, uh, units in that. Uh, the third option is, uh, mixed-use project, and, and, uh, there's some specific details, and so didn't go through, uh, that in here. So in the memo that we provided to you, we, we do compare our existing code to the draft. Um, we've, uh, Dave Tyler's has looked at the parking standards for quite a few cities. We looked at Tacoma, Bellevue, Marysville, Spokane, Edmonds, Linwood, and Bellingham. And so we provided you some tables. I'm not going to walk through all these tables right now, but, uh, we looked at, uh, multifamily outside of downtown, uh, we looked at multifamily in downtown. Uh, one of the things that we, uh, noticed, for example, you know, getting back to the market approach, uh, Tacoma has no parking required downtown for multifamily. So, uh, there's, there's nothing in their code for, uh, parking downtown. For non-residential, uh, we looked at some of the, the major uses, uh, bank, financial, medical, clinic, office, manufacturing, um, and we looked at restaurant, uh, fast food, retail, uh, both indoor and, uh, bulky merchandise. Want to talk about, uh, again, a little bit the, uh, schedule that we have here. Uh, so, uh, this has turned out really fuzzy on here, so something happened in the resolution here, but, uh, so right now, we're, uh, in the month of March, where we're basically kind of going through these various chapters, uh, after this briefing, we'll be doing chapter twenty, um, and so we're going through that, um, and, uh, back to the public for some outreach, uh, towards, um, uh, the end of April for some public open houses we're looking at, uh, getting more feedback from the public, and we have some developer forums that we're going to hold. We're doing some internal testing of it, and we come back to the Planning Commission for briefing of things in the middle of May, and looking at, uh, public hearings with Planning Commission at the beginning of June, uh, for this. So lots of, uh, additional opportunity for, uh, review and input from, uh, from the public as part of this. So a lot of the, uh, background studies and the detailed draft codes are at everettwa.gov backslash metro, and, um, with that, uh, we're here to help answer any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Mark?
Out of curiosity, is there any pathway for developers to zero for the parking requirements for multifamily in Metro? Because I understand, commercial office space, you said there was no parking requirements, but still even in Metro Everett, there were still parking minimums, right? So make sure I understood what you briefed me on.
Yeah, we haven't drafted any, uh, thing that would get to zero, other than they could do a, a traffic study, a parking management study that shows there's not going to be any need for parking and try to get the city engineer and planning director to approve that.
But outside of that, is there more straight, because parking studies are expensive, is there any, you know, way that we can say, I mean, parking may not be an issue in ten years. If someone wants to build next five, you know, we should give them a pathway forward. I mean, what if they put forward with, um, similar to what a hotel does? They have a bus that services their entire apartment building. You know, what if, uh, is, would that be a parking study or a plan? I mean, is there a way for these developers to be creative and get to zero?
I don't think there's any way to get to zero under what we have drafted. There's ways to reduce it down to about half of the requirement, which is also less than what the current standards are today. So, um, it certainly is a, a huge reduction from where we are today, uh, but I don't think there's any, uh, pathway that we've drafted right now to get to zero for multifamily.
I'll collect my thoughts and let other commissioners, uh, chime in, then I'll circle
I noticed that there was, uh, proposed cap for bicycle parking, but not for vehicle parking. What was the, the factor behind that?
Uh, well, for the, you know, we looked at different codes that had bicycle parking requirements, and some of them had a cap, and it just was, it just seemed like, um, um, at some point, it might, we might be requiring a lot more parking than, or bicycle parking that will be utilized. So we, we set as a maximum, it would only require twenty for the non-residential. Uh, for the, uh, off-street parking, the reason for the, uh, we, we didn't think that there was, right now, um, Everett, because of the price of land and other things, we didn't think people are going to overbuild parking so much that we were worried about it when we drafted these standards. You know, five, ten years ago, I think people were overbuilding parking, and so there was more worry at that point. But right now, in the drafting of this, we weren't quite as worried to propose that. But, uh, that was something that came up in the last year was to, to have that, and we certainly have seen jurisdictions that have, have drafted that, and we, we, we could, uh, draft an alternative if the commission and council want us to do that.
I'd be interested to see what that would look like, what that cap would end up being, factors we put into it.
Okay. Yeah, I, I remember seeing some jurisdictions that said you can't go, uh, more than fifty percent above the minimum levels, um, was a very simple way of, uh, ease of administration. I, I saw some that actually had ranges, but then it gets really kind of complicated. But, uh, the, the draft that I saw that I thought was really easy, uh, to understand and is to say, you know, if you're required to do a hundred spaces, uh, as a minimum, you couldn't build more than a hundred and fifty, so just a fifty percent, uh, rule on that. So something like that would be easily, uh, added to the draft.
David, what about, uh... What are we going to do with these autonomous cars? Uh, I, I know the parking side of it, but they're going to pick me up in front of this hotel over here, or, uh, they're going to pick me up at my apartment. So what, what will Uber or Rideshare? I don't see any of that in here. How, how, how will that be calculated?
Uh, well, I think that's part of, you know, a little bit similar to the transit, uh, questions, is I think that's part of the future, that there's, there's not a need for, um, the parking per se, because those, those vehicles are going to go and pick you up or drop you off, and then they're going to go somewhere else to do another service.
Right, but they, they need someplace to pick me up, right? They got to park so that I can get in the vehicle, and I got to park so I can get out of the vehicle. So what, where are those calculations?
So, so we do have in there, so we have reduction of the off-street parking if you had car-share stalls, and so that we have that, uh, as part of our off-street parking. But, uh, if it's an on-street thing, I think it gets back to how do we manage the on-street parking supply and, and what may happen with something like that? So my turn to Ryan to, I don't know if he's thought about that at all.
Yeah, what I would see happening on that over time is that as that becomes a bigger part of the mode of transportation, what you'll probably see is some of the on-street system being converted from formal stalls to, uh, drop-off and pickup points and load zones to facilitate that, you know, kind, kind of continuous activity of people being dropped off and picked up and vehicles moving on.
Um, the other question I had is, we haven't spoken about drones and, you know, uh, Boeing announced today they're going to start, you know, doing those types, and in China and Japan, and some of those places are already doing it. So, um, you know, where, where are those people, if they're part of the transportation solution in, in, in the future?
Well, I think that all those things in the future are reducing the, the personal vehicles that you have. I mean, the, what you saw in that article today, which I found, uh, really interesting, was, you know, those are autonomous flying taxis. And so, again, they're going to, uh, go and pick you up and drop you off, and they're going to go on to their next thing, so they don't need to, they had need a drop-off zone, and I'm not sure how that whole thing is going to work and how they're going to monitor the airspace and, you know, deal with all that.
But if it ain't what Ryan was saying, they, there would be one with a round X or something, and that's where they could land.
Yeah, perhaps, perhaps in the future, you know, every block or every four blocks will have a, you know, a, a, a drop-off zone for Uber and flying taxis. I don't, I don't know, you know, or maybe it's the top of a parking garage and the Funko Garage, um, you know, things like that. Um, but I think the interesting thing about it is that things are changing so rapidly that, uh, I think that's a little bit a part of not requiring so much off-street parking that, um, we're overbuilding something, because the, the change to these other technologies is, is clearly showing a, a less demand for the personal vehicles to get where you want to go for work, uh, leisure, and things like that.
If I could just jump in, like, based off of that, I mean, I, I am, the more I think about it, there has to be a pathway to zero. I don't think saying that, you know, they could submit a traffic study is enough. I mean, those are expensive to put together, and it's still a bet. Uh, giving people more, giving developers more guidance on a way to get to zero or an ability to, or lowering the standards so they can get to zero. I mean, whether or not it's similar to cap and trade, like, I can put in this much money to offset my, uh, this much money in transit fees, or this much money to sustain a parking garage in a, uh, built structure in this corner of the city, which will be demolished once we move to autonomous vehicles, um, either like a fund that developers can pay into that costs less than, um, uh, that costs less than parking shares, or a, um, or more concrete way for them to look forward, because, you know, what, we know that the end is coming for parking. It, it's not a matter of if, but when. And if we know that buildings have a life cycle that is going to be much longer than, than what we have here, and, and, you know, why make them build some space that they don't need to when we can ask them to be a little more clever and inventive right now? So, I mean, they're, I, I would like to see zero, uh, as a parking min- as the minimum in a lot more places in the city, but, uh, I will defer to some experts, but I would like, but there has to be at least a pathway to zero that's far more spelled out than, than the pathways that we have here, uh, so that it's not so much of a gamble. We want people to build pu- buildings without cars, without parking spaces, not because it's nifty and cool and trendy, because it's environmentally sustainable, because over half of our city's carbon pollution comes from vehicles, because in, in cities are the best tool for economic growth and development, and they exist in inherent tension with vehicles. Uh, the personal automobile denigrates a vibrant downtown, and so for us to grow, to be successful, to be competitive, to make jobs for our families in the future, we got to put together a pathway now. Sorry, that's, I get worked up on that one.
And Commissioner Mark, I can appreciate your enthusiasm on that topic, but as we know, things are changing rapidly, and as we exist right now as the city of Everett, that's not sustainable to have zero parking for a multifamily structure. I mean, it just doesn't work. It, in, in fact, I, I would say that not one developer that's going to develop something in the city of Everett right now would say zero.
But that's, but that's what I'm saying. I'm not saying I require zero right now. I'm asking for a pathway to zero. I'm allowing space, I want to, I want space for people to be able to innovate, uh, to, you know, to come at it with a new approach. Like, I'm not saying you have to have zero parking. I mean, I understand there's a transition period, but we need to allow people some, to have some flexibility.
And that's what codes are for. I mean, if you go right now and say there's zero, and now we have, we're not at that nice eighty-five percent point, now we have a problem. So as things progress and things change and development change and the world changes, and, I mean, those are things that you can implement in code, but as we sit right now, I would disagree. A path to zero, I think, is a, would, would, would not be good.
Now, just to be a little more, add a little more clarity, on the path to zero, that's not just saying we get rid of, like, the path to zero is putting together implements to mitigate it, like, guidance for mitigation, whether you are a developer saying, I want to invest or pay an annual transit fee so that I don't have to have parking, because when I crunch the numbers, a transit fee would make more sense for me in the long run, uh, than putting in parking stalls. Or if you are a developer and say, listen, I want to get rid of all but five of my off-street parking and reserve those for zip cars. Uh, I, you know, I know we talked about that in there, but, you know, uh, that still gets us down to like, what, I mean, what's, what's the lowest ratio we can get? Because I see point eight-five for a studio, but, I mean, if you use that with a, with that, like, on a frequent transit route, that gets to point seven, what, point five-five or point eight-five, that's still point four, uh, parking stalls per studio. I mean, what, I, I, what mitigating factors can we give more guidance to developers to get us down to the zero? Not just, say, zero flat out, but to say, what's a good plan? And not just put together a transit study, but what, give them guidance so they know how to be successful.
Well, that sounds like, you know, you're implementing a, a, a plan that they got to put together, a parking, a parking analysis, right? Where we just said, we shouldn't require that, and now it's, oh, we need to do all these things. So they're going to come to you and say, hey, these are the things I'd like to do, and I think it's sustainable, and then that's something that can be reviewed. But they're going to be putting that together at their expense in order to identify what that might be.
But, you know, I'm looking at the requirements right here, and, you know, I don't see a way to getting, to get very low. I don't see, I didn't, I don't see an easy pathway to zero. So the more guidance we give, and maybe reducing just a little bit to allow them to get there, uh, that's what I want to see. I want to see a way for a developer to be, to, you know, look at a, uh, look at the problem, look at the challenge creatively, and then find a way to get, get there and give, us having enough tools laid out for them to do it, so it's not as much of a gamble. Because we, you know, parking studies may not pay off. You may go, nope, doesn't, doesn't, doesn't pencil out. So the more tools we put in front of them, the more guidance we can put in front of them, and the more... more guidance we can put in front of them, and the more, the more guidance we can put in front of them, so it's more of a sure, sure plan moving forward, I think that more people would make use of that. And that's what I want to see. And, again, like, I would like to see pathways forward in those schemes that would get us down to zero. Like, I've put together enough plans, enough mitigating factors to get us to zero. Because zero is a very, is a very important number. You don't have to be at zero, but it's a great number to be at, environmentally, sustainably, and just overall for enhancing Everett.
I think in the same way that we incentivize lead or built-green projects, building projects, we can start to incentivize that, that goal of the zero parking or the limited parking. You know, not every building is a lead or a built-green project, but that incentive is there, and we've made accommodations within our building code to allow for those kinds of innovations in building. And it's, it's exciting to see it happen, and it definitely has, you know, that, that vision for the future. It's not ever, it's not possible for every project, every built project, but I think that it is inspiring people to think differently about building. And I think in the same way, we can be thinking differently about parking. And not every project will be a zero parking or a five-space parking project. But it does give that option to reach really far and meet that goal, which is...
Am I being clear in what I'm asking, or am I being fuzzy? Let me know if you want more clarity. I'm happy to provide more. Let me...
Alan Giffen, planning. I think one of the choices that you could take would be, or one of the alternatives you could consider would be the Tacoma alternative, which was zero, in their downtown, anyway, you know. That means, that doesn't mean that people won't build parking, it just means that the, as a matter of policy, the city won't require a developer to build parking for any building that they would do in a downtown, whether that's a non-residential or residential building. And so, that's the easy way to answer your question, would be to have a zero standard, and then let the market kind of dictate as different builders or developers figure out, or their lenders, more likely, will figure out what they want them to provide in the way of parking. We didn't put that in here as an option, but it's certainly one that has been used elsewhere.
I also want to reiterate that, you know, that the baseline for multifamily here is lower than the current baseline, and we have reductions up to half of that. And we have, then, out of half of that, you can further reduce by having other alternative modes of travel. So you can have, you know, in a mixed-use project, 50% of the requirement. You can do car-share stalls, motorcycle parking, and things like that. So, so in terms of bending the curve as to what they require off-street parking, we, you know, we're way far less than what the current code requires right now. So we're, we're getting closer to zero than, than it was. So, we're not there. I understand where you're going, but I don't want to leave any misconception with anyone else, maybe that's following, is that, that these standards are, are the same as they are currently, because they're not. There's a big reduction from current.
No, but I think that also kind of implies that the standards that were in place were right, and I just, I don't get the sense of that. And so...
These standards are also based on all those studies. So, again, you know, looking at those very recent studies of high-capacity transit things, I mean, these are numbers that were, were looked at in this region fairly recently. And so, they're supported by that in the multifamily of the actual car demand for the residential projects. So, so they are based on some, some local data there.
I was just going to say, maybe kind of more of a comment. I really like the idea of really kind of try to right-size the amount of parking requirements for what is actually being done. I'm just trying to think, I'm, you know, put myself in the shoes of a developer, because I think part of what we're trying to do is to encourage and enable the type of infill and additional development in that core that we're trying to, to attain. But I guess from a developer's perspective, I don't know. I mean, I'd be, so I'd be curious. I guess I just want to kind of put it out there, if there's developers following this. And I do see there's, there is a planned outreach for a developers forum. So, I'd be very curious for input for, you know, we think we're doing a good thing here, and that we'd be encouraging those things. But if, you know, from a developer's perspective, are they looking at this saying, yes? Or are they looking at this saying, well, maybe, but you're making a bunch of assumptions that maybe aren't going to pan out? Or you're just kind of adding a whole new level? You're changing some things but adding additional things? So, you know, are we really going to achieve, you know, what it is that we're hoping to achieve? So I would invite anybody to, from that perspective, who has that, to kind of, even if it's just anecdotal, about, just to kind of check, to make sure we are going on the right path.
Yeah, we've, you know, over the last year, I mean, we've had a lot of those conversations. So I know that the direction that, that we're doing is on the right path, but I'm sure we're going to get some detailed input when we have that. And so, we'll, we'll find some adjustments and bring that back to you, I'm sure, as we go along.
Most of them that I've spoke with are pretty comfortable with, and there's flexibility, and that's, that's what they're looking for. And it's that staggering or that staging into it. And I think the biggest question I get asked is, you know, we're looking at all these different cities, and we're spouting off Tacoma and Spokane and Seattle and Woodway and Bellingham. You know, the one unique thing, this is the metropolitan hub of the county, and a lot of those transportation modes that we're talking about, you know, you don't get Uber in Gold Bar, but you still got to come to the courthouse. Or you still want to go get your haircut, or you still want to get your taxes done. Or, so that, you know, that's the, it's more about the, what, my observation and the folks that I've talked to up and down Colby and Hewitt and outside of that area as well, is we're, we're a little bit unique, and we don't have some of those. So it's, like you said, we've got this, you know, all those things are coming at us, which ones are going to land and which ones aren't going to land. And, you know, there's, this affordable housing stuff is all here. But on the other side, the city's trying to raise the level of income in the city to attract the different, more homeownership and that kind of stuff. So it's, there's a lot of unknowns here.
And I was kind of, one of the studies that was in Redmond, and, I mean, Redmond is not Everett. Maybe there's aspects of that that we would like to have present in Everett. We'd maybe like Everett to be more like Redmond in some ways, but currently it's not. So, I mean, are those the right comparisons? And maybe even to some of what Commissioner Lark was saying, perhaps, are we going far enough with these things to really get the type, to encourage the type of development and response that we'd like from, I guess, from the development community? And, I mean, maybe we're not going far enough. I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there.
We did have one person that wanted to address the planning commission on this item. You guys want to hear on that? Okay.
Just one, go ahead. So we're, we're talking about the residential side of things, but then there's the, you know, the hair shop, or the coffee shop, or the dentist, or the, you know, and that seems to be the folks that are a little distraught right now with making their businesses work. And how are we going to address, the mixed-use is an example. Is that, I didn't...
Are you referring to downtown specifically, or?
You know, the greater metro area that, that we've talked about here today.
Well, the downtown area, so we don't have any off-street parking required for non-residential. So that gets back to, you know, public parking management. So, you know, on-street parking and, and management of that. So...
And then the employee parking, a lot of times, what you'll hear, you know, when you talk to the parking enforcement, I had a cup of coffee with a couple of those folks, and, you know, they know the habitual offenders, which I can be one on certain days when I've got certain things to happen in downtown. You know, it's, you're trying to follow the system and move and not get a parking ticket. Sometimes you're...
Yeah, so, you know, again, I think it's, it is that enforcement of, of those things is, is really an important aspect of that. And, you know, getting back to one thing that we have in this draft is the Transportation Demand Management Plan. So, for, you know, having no parking required works well if we actually get people to use alternative modes of transportation like is planned. And so, trying to get an enforcement mechanism for that on an ongoing basis is, is a pretty, pretty important step to help make sure that those employees that, in these new businesses or whatever, you know, is that we, we find ways to make sure that they, they have the programs in place to encourage transit ridership, to, you know, carpooling, all that kind of stuff, to find other ways of, of doing it rather than taking up the precious on-street parking spaces that we have. Those are supposed to be for retail customers. That's what the purpose of the on-street parking is. Not for employee parking, it's for retail.
That's a very important distinction, just in that the, the on-street and off-street systems, even though they're closely related, have very different purposes, you know, with the on-street system being very much about supporting retail, supporting business, and that's really what that system is for. And as you constrain the parking on residential development, then you drive that on-street system really hard, and so your enforcement has, and your management of that system has to become much more active, so that that parking doesn't get monopolized by people that, that don't have parking in their building and are seeking to take the on-street stalls that are within, you know, reasonable distance of their building, that really need to be reserved for business and for retail.
And I worry about that balance, too, sometimes. I think you can also get a, I mean, create an impression, you're trying to, you want people to come downtown and to shop and to engage in business, but if they start getting a sense, or there gets to be a reputation of the area of being either you can't park there, or maybe enforcement's too aggressive, it can just kind of backfire, I think. And so, it's a difficult balance. I don't...
Out of curiosity, oh, go ahead. Commissioner, just stay up, please.
I was just going to finalize it. You know, it's, it's like the success of the employer that we have in downtown Everett, and now they're expanding their employment. And so they're going to use more of their off-street parking that they have. And so, that then is going to throw all those folks someplace. And we've got a lot of, you know, there's a couple buildings on Wetmore that, you know, when filled up, or the Sun Protection Company used to be as an example, you could, you could easily put a 100 to 200 people in that facility, and I don't know where they would park. Anyway, I'm, I'm good.
Out of curiosity, is there any kind of provision, because I know Microsoft, Amazon, Google have looked into having private charter buses, private transit system for their employees. Has there been any incentive structures or conversation around that for businesses here in the downtown core to offset their parking needs, their parking requirements, and lessen the impact on on-street parking?
So, one of the flexibilities that we have in this draft is to provide those types of things and present those options to the city engineer and planning director. And so, right now, I think, if I recall, I think the non-residential, we can change the parking by 10%, I think, is the, is the maximum. And so, we've taken that limit out. So, the reductions could be larger. So if people have ways to do that through charter bus and other things that, you know, the city engineer and planning director determined to be adequate measures that can be implemented long-term, because it's not just a one-year deal, and something like that, that then could put that in place.
And no charter bus kind of provisions exist for residential buildings, though? Do they?
No, but I have seen in, in some places, again, of, you know, buying transit passes, like ORCA passes, you know, you know, you're in advance. And again, those are the types of things of giving every resident, like an ORCA pass. And so, once you have an ORCA pass or some kind of, you know, pass, you're going to use transit more frequently as a result of that. So, those are the types of potential TDM measures that, that could be in place that would reduce that parking demand.
Any other comments, or you want to hear from folks? Okay, so we had two people sign up so far to address the planning commission on this. The first one is Maxwell Mooney. If you can come up and please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Maxwell Mooney. My address is, I live in Clearview, but my business is just right over across the street. It's Narrative Coffee. And I just had some questions about kind of current enforcement policies regarding parking, just so I have a better understanding. Currently, the, the enforcement policies are, anyone who parks within the downtown, like the CBD, gets 90 minutes period. Is that correct? And then if they move to another part of the CBD, that 90 minutes was, is still in place?
Currently, there, there is what is known as a repark ordinance, and the repark ordinance exists solely for trying to reduce abuse of the 90-minute system by employees that, you know, move to evade. And so, that's the purpose of it. The parking enforcement officers try really hard to focus that on people and parking, parkers that they know are actually doing that. But occasionally, that doesn't happen. And so, the very people we want to incentivize to be in downtown do multiple things, get caught up in that. And really, the, the longer-term answer for that is when we go to a pay-to-park system, and, and then that will be the end of the repark.
Okay, cool. That, that's sort of what I'm here to, to ask and maybe suggest, because I've, I've had a number of our guests who have been slapped with tickets, who, you know, they come, they go to somewhere else, like a restaurant in downtown, and they, they go and have, have dinner or lunch, and then they come to our place to get some coffee. And so, we see them come in, and like, we try to pay attention, especially out in front of our space of like, you know, like, when parking enforcement's coming by and those sorts of things, because we care about our guests, and we want to make sure they have a good experience at our coffee shop. And I've had at least four separate experiences where I've, I've seen a guest walk in, park in front of our space, they come into our space, and then grab a coffee, use the restroom, and then while they're in the restroom, parking enforcement comes by and starts writing a ticket. And I'll, I'll go out there and just be like, hi, I just saw them park. They just got here. Why are you writing the ticket? And the response is always, well, if it's not your car, it's none of your business. But it literally is my business, you know? And, and so, I'm wondering if there's a way that we could potentially change, I think pay-to-park is a very reasonable thing to do. Parking in downtown Everett is free. That's not the case in any of the other major cities in the, in the area. And so, I don't think that's necessarily a bad idea. So there are some other options that I think would be potential solutions to this, where, you know, you could identify high areas where you get those reparkers happening, and kind of enforce areas along that, those kind of sections specifically, you know, a large employer in downtown who's having a lot of, like, issues with that, you know, versus, you know, somewhere else. So that could be a potential option. But I just mostly wanted to let people know that we're running into this issue fairly frequently. And while I actually, I tend to agree with Commissioner Lark's kind of position on having an option for path to zero for non-resident, for residential developments, because I do think that people who live in downtown tend to shop and work in downtown, and so, they don't need vehicles as much. But we do get a decent number of people coming in from out of town. So, if you were going to put parking requirements, I would almost see it as being more beneficial for some of these, like, office spaces or, like, mixed-use spaces, at least from my experience, which is admittedly anecdotal and not, not the typical. But I just wanted to share a little bit about what we're going through.
Thank you, Mr. Mooney.
Thanks.
Dana Oliver?
Hi, I'm Dana Oliver with Downtown Everett Association at 2707 Colby, and it sounds like I'm shouting. Sorry if it's too loud. So, I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I decided that perhaps it would be a good opportunity for you to hear some of the things that I've been hearing from business owners downtown. And I wanted to quickly point out, for anybody that's, that is interested in forming a parking plan that is similar to Tacoma, please remember that they have Link Light Rail downtown. So they have built-in transportation, and we do not have that here. So if you haven't visited downtown, go take a look. It's, it's fabulous. It's a wonderful system. They also have Sound Transit that runs downtown as well, and, and we don't have that either.
They've also transitioned to pay-to-park over the last, probably eight years or so now.
They have. Having been down to visit a couple of, well, they have a downtown association, so I was down there last year to visit, and we had on-street paid parking, which was really nice, because we got to stay as long as we paid. I really would like to see our city move to that, by the way, downtown. Okay, just a couple of things. One of our employees at the Downtown Everett Association has partnered with a city employee, and they're doing knock and talks in the central business, central business district. And they have a set of questions that they're asking. One of the questions that they ask the merchants is, what are some barriers that are preventing you from being as successful as you could be? It's a version of that, that language. And... It's a version of that language, and eight out of 10 are saying parking, 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 and parking. We've heard at least two businesses that if their lease were to expire, they won't renew because they've paid hundreds of dollars in parking tickets, not only for themselves, but for people that come to visit their business. There's another business that's currently located, he, the gentleman that owns a business is in dental school, as is his son, and he said, I have a business here now, I will never locate my dental office downtown because there's no parking. So, that's two opportunities that parking could affect beneficially businesses that would like to locate downtown and/or retain businesses downtown. So, I hope I'm making sense. They're unhappy about parking. Okay. Village Theater, I can't remember the number of patrons that they have, but the last time I talked with Erica Weir, who's the general manager, she's contracting with 10, 10 parking lots to provide parking, guaranteed parking for her subscribers. That's 10 different lots that she has to manage. She wouldn't probably have those customers had she not had the access to that parking, but there's no parking garage, so she has to wheel and deal, right? So, that's the way she gets guaranteed parking. As of October, she can't provide that anymore. Funko's expanding, and the contract that she has with Port and our Gardner Garage is probably going to go away, because they don't have any more capacity. It's fixed capacity at the garage. So, again, another opportunity where, am I being cut off? No, okay, thank you. Where parking is really genuinely impacting our businesses downtown, because there's simply, there's either a management problem, which we know, or a capacity problem, or both, a combination of both. So, I just, I really, really want you all to think really deeply about what questions we're asking of the people that are affected by our parking today, and then think about the transition period that we have for the next 10 to 20 years before light rail gets here, because what we're talking about now is not just about 20, 36, and beyond, it's about sustaining the businesses that we have now and attracting the customers that will spend their money in those retail shops. That's what's going to sustain downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver.
My transportation assistance is a little slow tonight. Good evening, Victor Harris, beautiful downtown Everett. Couple of things that come to mind as we talked about, listening to a number of things up here, Mr. Chairman. First thing, if we talk about transportation and charter transportation, please don't forget, we have Everett Transit that we need to ensure its financial success first, and I think they can do that. The off-street commercial question, definitely we need someplace for customers to park. That's, I think that's been well stated. For the family, multifamily question, the parking should be a minimum of one-to-one, and it must be building-owned parking. I've had a friend in Seattle, she's got an apartment building, there's no parking. If a resident wants to park, they have to lease from a private lot, there's no association with the building, and I think that's just completely wrong. If you live someplace, you should have parking. A few years ago, at this commission, there was, they wrestled with some facilities being well below one-to-one, I think it was stated earlier that it's one-to-four. This was really unacceptable. Part of the problem there is that a number of individuals are disabled, need care services in order to maintain independent living. Those employees need places to park, those are daytime hours. So, you know, in one building, Broadway Plaza shares parking with the, called Gibson Senior Center. They're wrestling matches for parking spaces in there, because the senior center is a healthy place to be, so, you know, it's personnel that work in the building are getting pushed out, and that's because it's a lack of one-to-one parking. Part of the problem, I think, in the whole North Everett, is we wrestled with the question of zone permit parking. There are a number of houses north of 41st do not have garages. These are homes that were built over before 1930. They didn't have vision for how many cars we were going to have today and where we are now. Where are we going to be in a hundred years? I don't think anybody's Christopher Wall looks that well into the future, and we need one parking, because we do not know where we're going to be. And I still want to have my RV so that I can go to the mountains in the summertime, but I may use Everett Transit all day long, but weekends come along, it's, you know, Again, that's very important on the issue of caregivers and independent living. One way we can reduce the burden on our population is by maintaining our independence. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to address the planning commission on this topic?
Kent Beverly, 312 Pex Drive. Quite frankly, you don't need to provide a parking space for me, because I don't come downtown. I haven't really found anything in the downtown area, except for the courthouse and these meetings, that provide a reason for me to come here. I find my services elsewhere, or in South Everett, Seattle. I don't think Everett should try to model itself in parking requirements or its attitude toward cars as Seattle does, and I try to avoid Seattle now. I used to work there, but I haven't had to work there for a number of years now, and I wouldn't work there again if I had to. So, I just want to let you know that I don't think minimizing parking in this culture, in this setting, is a good idea. People still need cars, still depend on cars, but concentrating on the downtown area, like I said, I don't find anything down here to come down here for. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience? Seeing none.
So, David, I think you guys did a great job putting this together. I do have some thoughts and comments on the draft that you have tonight. The first one's on page five, related to the schools. And I agree, as far as parking on-site for schools, a study is obviously key to getting it to function correctly, but what I've found more than anything is just the neighborhood impacts and circulation, where you're having folks that don't want to go into the parking areas and having difficulty stacking in order to pick up their children and all that, and it's really affecting neighborhoods and all communities, so I don't know how you could put that into the code or anything like that, but I know it's a real policing issue, at least for the city that I work for, and I'm sure it is in Everett, too, is that spill over into neighborhoods and that, so, just for a thought, I guess, as part of that, you know, parking study that they consider circulation, and how, you know, how they can actually drop off and pick up kids, which seems to be the way to go anymore, whereas, you know, we all walked the mile uphill both ways to school back in the day, so. On page seven, on the bottom, number C, it says off-street parking spaces maybe include spaces in garages. I'm curious if there's thought of any restrictions that these garages are required to utilize for parking, because we know most people in this area tend to stack up all their stuff in these garages, and then, again, you spill over, so. I know it's something that is required in some multifamily developments and things like that, but it's just a thought, more than anything else, is that how do we ensure that these garages that are being utilized as the required parking are actually being utilized as such, so. Another thought on page eight, which is under 35.050A1, A1A, talks about non-resident use or not required to provide off-street parking. Then it goes on to say, except for government, that a parking management study or plan of approval by the planning director and city engineer. Curious if that would be, I know all the other stuff is administrative, that if that would be something that, just from all of the stuff that came out from the courthouse expansion and all that, if that should be some type of a hearing examiner review, that's more of a public review process than just an administrative review process, and again, it's just a thought, I don't have any answers or suggestions on that, it's just a thought that in order to get those things vetted through the system and with a lot of public input on those, especially, you know, expansion of those things, they have such a dramatic impact in a downtown setting.
So, on your schedule, you'll notice that I think the first meeting in April, we're going to do a briefing on Title 15 procedures, so that's where we'll start identifying which of these actions require notice to neighbors and public hearings and things like that, so we'll be presenting you the list at that point.
Okay, great, thank you. Let's see, I have some comments. I think the only other comment that I had was, oh, on page 16, relating to parking area illumination, consideration to reduce from 30 feet for the luminaires to 25 feet to try to just limit the light impacts. And I don't know what the current standard is, if it's currently 30 feet and you're keeping it that way. The 25 feet may require additional luminaires, but generally, I think it has less impact on the surrounding properties at that height, rather than in a 30-foot height. And lastly, I noticed that, well, I didn't see anything regarding design standards for parking garages in the parking code. I know that there is stuff for the design standards in the downtown, but since this is covering citywide, if someone were to put in a parking garage elsewhere in the city, is there design standards that we need to incorporate into the parking code to ensure that we are not just allowing some kind of a parking structure that doesn't kind of meet the visual intent that we'd like to see in the city?
Yeah, okay, we'll take a look at that. I'm not sure there are any standards right now, but we'll take a look at that.
Thank you. Those were my comments. Does the commission have any additional comments? Seeing none at this time, I guess we'll go on to the next agenda, which item, which is Metro Everett Development Standards.
Thanks, Ryan. All right, another small, little topic. We're doing some heavy lifting, I really appreciate the planning commission, all the work that we were doing here, so. So, this is the second chapter of, for Metro Everett, but it also is the core residential area, and we'll talk about that in just a second, so. These are the development standards that we have as a new chapter 20. And in this drawing, real quickly, the city has what we call a core residential area, and includes most of, I think, all of Metro Everett, and so when we did the Metro Everett Plan, we kind of bisected the core residential area, and so we have some areas to the north and south, and a little bit to the east that are core residential area. And so, rather than keep that chapter in the current code, what we're proposing is to take those standards and incorporate it in chapter 20, so this chapter 20 development standards applies to both Metro Everett and this core residential area, so as we walk through this, it applies to both. Just as a reminder, the draft zoning, we have three zones for Metro Everett, urban residential, urban commercial mixed, and the urban light industrial. We also have some overlays, historic overlays within the area, and in the core residential area, the underlying zone isn't changed, it basically functions as an overlay to that zone. In some of these development standards, as we did in the use tables, the designation of streets within Metro Everett affects some of the development standards, so the hierarchy that we have is a transit-oriented development street, or TOD street, pedestrian street, pedestrian connector, and residential mixed-use. The transit-oriented development are in Everett Station, where Light Rail in Everett Station is, along Broadway, along Pacific, where Swift routes are in there, and then the pedestrian streets are in the core of downtown and on the east end of Hewitt Avenue, and we have residential mixed-use along Everett Avenue, California Cedar, going around Providence Campus, and down Colby in this area, and also on Marine View Drive. So, in chapter 20, as we started various internal drafts with this, ended up with a proposal to kind of write this a little bit more thematically and put it in articles, so that it's easier for both staff and the development community to find things, hopefully. We'll see as we test this a little bit more. But we have several articles that are drafted, we have an introduction, lot and building placement, building heights, building form and design, site and public improvements, and then some administrative provisions. One of the thoughts is that, as we go to code streamlining, is that potentially other development standards for the city will come in here, so one of the reasons to have some of the reserved articles is that those things that might apply to other areas would come into some of those articles. When we look at the applicability of this, we do have, it's applicable to both the Metro Everett and the core residential area, but there are some exceptions. These are similar exceptions we have in the code, but minor exterior alterations would not have to comply, which is defined as 50% value, building value over three years. Interior alterations, really, we're talking about not change of use here in this, but the development of property. And then, change of use, except if additional off-street parking or outdoor areas for businesses are added. So, if you did a change of use and that required any additional off-street parking, or you were going to do some outdoor area for business, then it would trigger a couple provisions, and that includes landscaping, parking, sidewalks, and weather protection. So, we've identified a few development standards that we would propose to be applicable for change of use. So, looking at Article Two, Lot and Building Placement, I'm just going to cover some of the main topics. First off, minimum density, try to, as much as possible, get in this chapter to have lots of tables, so that people can find standards. I should mention that a lot of the illustrations in here are still temporary and they're rough, so our intention is that, I think I mentioned at the last meeting, that we just got the drawings right before Niels went on vacation, and so we'll have better drawings here in the next couple of weeks to insert, but a lot of these things try to illustrate these different things, standards that we have. So, for minimum density, we're proposing a minimum, and so there are no minimum density requirements in the city right now, so this is new for the city. Say you would have to develop at least three units for lots that are 40 feet or greater in width, two units if lot is smaller, one if it's in a mixed-use development, so if you're in, we wouldn't require additional units if you're basically doing a mixed-use project. Maximum density, we're removing any maximum density requirements in Metro Everett. In the R3 zone in the core residential area, the current limit is one dwelling unit per 1,500 square feet, and so we would keep that in there. Florida area requirements right now throughout downtown, and we have Florida area restrictions. The draft proposes none to this, and so there are no Florida area requirements, and we're going to rely on some of the design standards instead. When we look at building placement, we don't really have maximum setbacks, but we do say if you are going to set the building back 10 feet or more, you're going to have to provide some design features, like a plaza or a forecourt. So, like downtown, we have, in the urban mixed, zero-foot setbacks in the front, but if you put your building back 10 feet, then you're going to have to do some kind of architectural treatment there in that space of a plaza or a forecourt, so that you just don't have empty space there. so that you just don't have empty space there. Uh, there is, uh, one provision in the core residential area, so as we delete that chapter, uh, that was, uh, we felt important to continue, and that is a view corridor down the end of twenty-third and twenty-fourth, at West Marine View Drive, that, uh, property was vacated, but, uh, wanted to kind of keep that, uh, for the view corridors there, and so we've, uh, put that, uh, into this chapter. We do have exceptions to setbacks, which primarily duplicate existing code, uh, we have worked on trying to clean this up a little bit, and we've allowed, uh, for allowances for heat pumps and some other things in setbacks, so right now, it's one of, uh, the challenges that are administrative things that we have, is that, is usually, uh, request to put a heat pump in a side yard setback, uh, or rear yards, different places, and so we have some allowances for things like heat pumps. And, uh, we've worked on trying to clean up the language for exceptions for porches and, uh, decks and things like that to make it clear how that happens. When we look at Article three for building heights, uh, I know we've covered this before, but in Metro Everett, uh, we measure heights in floors, not in, not in feet, uh, we count the first floor as fifteen feet and upper floors as ten feet, um, you can, uh, build, uh, uh, you know, upper floors taller than that if you want, uh, but then we consider it as a fraction of a floor, and we would round down, so if you're seventh floor, uh, limited in there, and I think in our draft standards, we show how the rounding, uh, works, um, in this. Metro, uh, heights, uh, we have, uh, heights within Metro Everett, uh, different pattern, uh, we've, we've talked about this, uh, heights before, and we've done some of the modeling for you, so nothing has changed, uh, from, in our previous conversations, seven to twenty-five floors kind of in the core, uh, area, uh, as you notice in this, uh, map, is that several areas we have a range, if it says seven to twenty-five, uh, seven is what we call the base height maximum, and then, uh, the upper is incentive height maximum, so, wherever there's a range, uh, you get to the higher range, uh, with an incentives. Uh, because the core residential area, uh, chapter would be, uh, removed, we have a heights map in here for the north end, uh, and as you can see, uh, this is the blue hatched areas here, the only other mapped heights we have are in the Broadway mixed use, and again, the Broadway mixed use zone gets, uh, bisected by this, and so we have the Broadway mixed use, uh, heights in there, but we haven't changed any of the height standards, and there's some unique things in the Broadway mixed use, and so we're, just providing this really as reference, uh, more than anything. The south end, uh, we have a height, uh, map there, um, one of the things that's a little bit different, uh, when the Evergreen, uh, Way Plan got adopted along Rucker, there are different heights in there, and so what we, uh, it was really inconsistent with the core residential, and so what we've done is brought the core residential as a predominant thing, and we would amend the Evergreen Plan to show that this would be forty-five feet, uh, height limit, uh, within this area because it adjoined some residential neighborhoods there to the south, or to the, in the south, but to the west of that area corridor. Uh, again, a new, uh, thing for the city is that we're proposing some minimum building heights, and so in the urban residential and urban mixed zone is that we would require at least two floors of, of construction, uh, in the, uh, urban light industrial, no requirements, but on transit-oriented development streets, we would have four floors, so we're, uh, so this is the first time we've, uh, like the minimum density, this is minimum building height, so we're trying to make sure that we, uh, get a minimum density, um, within these areas. Uh, briefly mentioned earlier about the height range in Metro Everett, uh, where there's a range that's shown on the map, uh, the base height maximum, you can get to the low end of the range without providing any of the incentives required, so if it says seven floors as a height, uh, as the base height maximum, you can get to that without, uh, providing any, um, additional public, uh, benefit for that. If you want to go above that, then, uh, to get to that, the high-end range or, or anywhere in between, you need to provide some public benefit, uh, to get to there. And in the height incentives, we have several topics in there, including affordable housing, so basically you get five additional square feet for every one square foot of affordable housing, so you add up the, your floors for that. Uh, we have public open space and parks, uh, which, depending on what you have, is either three to one or five to one, historic preservation, green building, brownfields, public parking, public art, and agricultural land, uh, preservation. Uh, a few of these ratios, as we work through the draft ordinance, are different than we have in the, the Metro Everett Plan, and so if these, uh, look good, uh, when we bring the final plan back to you, we'll change some of the, the policy language in the draft Metro Everett Plan to, uh, relate to this, and, and this, uh, some of these standards, for example, are kind of key questions we're gonna have for the developer forum that we're gonna have, is, are these the right ratios for incentives, is this, you know, things that, uh, would, uh, make you, uh, build that as financially penciled to, to do that for you. So in Article four, we look at building form and design, uh, some of the standards include , uh, finished floor level, uh, the minimum ceiling height for the ground floor, uh, in the urban mixed, uh, zones, uh, versus the residential zones, different heights, uh, we do talk about some building depth, which is, uh, the depth of the building from the front facade, and of course, again, how we measure, uh, building height is a big part of, of form. Uh, building modulation standards, uh, this is a temporary drawing, and, uh, we'll have one that kind of relates to the standards better in the, uh, version, uh, the next version we put out, but, uh, from the front and side streets, uh, for every, uh, once you start at the fifth floor, we go back ten feet, and so the modulation, uh, this one shows us a four-story modulation, but if you pretend this is five stories, uh, we'd go back ten feet for floors five through seven, and then if you get up to floors eight through eleven, you would have another step back, uh, go back another ten feet, uh, and then, uh, floor is twelve plus, you get back to thirty feet. Uh, if this is an interior side, uh, depending on, uh, the standard, you'd go from five feet to forty feet on an interior side as, as the building gets, uh, taller. We do have building floor plate, uh, eighty-five percent, uh, for residential and a hundred percent in the urban mixed and, uh, uh, urban light industrial zones for floors two through four, floors five through seven, eighty-five percent, floors eight through eleven, uh, a range between fifty to sixty-five percent of the lot, and if you get, uh, higher stories, uh, floors twelve and plus would, the floor plate is a maximum of twelve thousand square feet, and, uh, if you don't know what a floor plate is, it's basically the floor area, so this is, that whole area would be measured as the floor plate, um, there of that, so. So we do, uh, as Chair Holland, uh, mentioned, uh, we have some design standards for, uh, structured parking, we have limits of how much can be on the ground floor, uh, based on, uh, different street designations, so, uh, we look at if it's, uh, integrated with a building, anywhere between ten to fifty percent of the building facade, uh, again, transit streets, pedestrian streets, uh, we'd want to have less structured parking along there, we want more, uh, active spaces, restaurants, uh, retail, things like that there, rather than parking garages, and so, uh, so the standards, uh, get less on the, the smaller, the connector streets. If it's a standalone structure, we look at between twenty-five and a hundred feet, uh, of ground floor, uh, limit on that, and we have some design standards for obscuring, uh, the view of cars. There are weather protection standards along the front facade, uh, ninety percent, uh, weather protection, so basically awnings, uh, as this, uh, drawing in a cross-section shows, but this would be across the whole face of the facade, so we need to get a drawing that shows the, the face of the facade there, seventy-five percent for pedestrian streets, forty-five percent for connector and residential mixed, and, uh, unclassified streets would just be the, the width of the entrance. Building transparency, we have, uh, more, uh, windows, so basically, uh, windows and, uh, you know, glass and doors, things like that would all count, and we're looking at, uh, from, uh, two feet up to ten feet is where we measure the transparency, so this is the area, uh, this is, and the diagram shows seventy-five percent, uh, we calculate that area, the, the facade, uh, measure that area, and so more transparent for transit-oriented development, uh, than, uh, the other streets. Article five is site and public improvements, um, wow, that drawing was so important, we put it in twice, I wonder what happened there, uh, uh, something happened with this PowerPoint. Uh, anyhow, this is, uh, uh, the drawing up here is, is supposed to show, uh, basically, uh, the, the cross-section of a, a street, uh, we found this really nice, uh, drawing that the city, uh, engineers in Seattle had put together that, uh, identifies the frontage zone, the pedestrian clear zone, uh, and your landscape furniture zone here, and that relates to the street types, and so, uh, the transit-oriented development streets, so the, the frontage zone here, uh, would be two feet, uh, minimum, uh, in this area, down to the smaller streets, nothing, uh, required, and then a transit-oriented development in the pedestrian clear zone, eight feet minimum, but, uh, ten feet would be desirable, and the landscape furniture zone, uh, six feet minimum for sixteen-foot minimum, uh, in a transit-oriented development street, uh, in here. And as you go down to the other, uh, streets, the pedestrian street, uh, similar, uh, there, uh, for the minimums, but the, the other streets, uh, definitely smaller, uh, standards as you walk through that. Street trees, uh, looking at a general standard, a space every fifty feet, uh, spacing, uh, requirements would be, looking at it, uh, for the block rather than, uh, on a per project basis, so we'd kind of look at, the block was, uh, four hundred feet, uh, long, we look at the spacing of every, uh, fifty feet, uh, for the spacing for that, and we have some standards of, of where, where they go, and we have some ability to say if they, they can't go in there, that there's a fee in lieu of that could be paid, uh, that basically goes to help improve, uh, street trees throughout, uh, this downtown area. Uh, other provisions in the code include, uh, pedestrian access to public streets, uh, pedestrian lighting, uh, and open space. Finally, uh, the last Article nine in here, we have some, uh, general admin, uh, quite a few of the standards we've identified as the ability to modify, um, modify the standards, uh, and a little bit going back to chapter nineteen, the special use regulations, where we have some standards in there and the limits of, of, uh, a ground floor usage, uh, or percentage of usage, and then the percent of residential and mixed use, but also some of the lot and building placement, the minimum building heights, form and design, site and public improvements are, uh, different standards that, uh, could be modified with a review process, uh, in approval of the city. So with that, we covered another major chapter of Metro Everett.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions, uh, staff, Mr. Allard?
I have a quick question, clarification, uh, so page twenty-three of the draft regarding the, uh, the floor plates, um, so, out of curiosity, I see two through four, a hundred, uh, um, has eighty-five percent of the lot area maximum, five through seven, eighty-five percent of the lot area, eleven jumps up to fifty-five percent of lot area as a maximum, and then floors twelve plus, you put a cap at twelve hundred square feet, is that twelve hundred square feet for all floors north of, uh, I mean, above the twelve-floor cumulative or per floor?
Per floor.
Okay, that was just my quick question, and, um, first of all, I'm really excited by the, just the kind of the, the guidance on the, uh, core residential area, I thought that was very interesting, and I just wanted to kind of, a quick, uh, clarification question, what currently right now is the state's regulation for, uh, is it three over, for, for concrete and then wood, um, built buildings, is it like one over four, is it one over three? I can't remember.
Five over one, uh, is the maximum that's allowed, uh, under the state building code for Everett.
All right, and by and large, just for the, the heights along Rucker and, like, the forty-five foot, the heights along Rucker and, uh, Broadway would generally be a concrete platform, and then would structure above that, uh, if you were to build to the maximum height, yes or no? Just said, 'cause I'm, I'm building towards, like, eh, the forty-five foot, if that's, if this, uh, point for a different discussion, a different time, that's fine, but, uh, I mean, I would, to me, it's, the first thought was bringing it into regulatory harmony with the maximum capacity for the most likely construction style that would be going in along there. I just wanted to pick staff's brain on that, is it?
Well, generally, the, Alan Giffen Planning, generally, the, uh, what the market will bear today is the five stories of wood frame construction over one or two stories of concrete, and that's allowed under the code, that's, uh, really all that's affordable today under, uh, current market conditions, to go higher than, that would require steel and concrete construction, our, uh, our, uh, land values and rent, uh, structures today aren't, uh, anywhere near what it, uh, would require to get to those building heights and, and those, that type of construction. And so while a lot of the, uh, base heights that we're talking about would be easily accomplished using what is affordable construction today, uh, the greater heights, we probably won't see in the near future until a market changes dramatically.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I must have, I just wanted to make sure I understood correctly, so like the forty-five foot along Broadway and Rucker, those are base heights and could be expanded on, or are those height maximums?
Depends which part, uh, Broadway or Rucker you're talking about, because we have different standards as you move, uh, north and south along those streets.
So I'm looking at page, I'm looking at page sixteen, yeah, and so my thought is, you know, if, more likely or not, if the market will, eh, it, more likely or not, if you're gonna build forty-five feet, and correct me if I'm wrong, you know, but it's my first general thought, if you're gonna build up to forty-five feet, you're probably gonna be doing a concrete, like, what, like, a three over, three over one, and, 'cause that would get us there, so my, my other thought is, you know, why not, like, why not conform that height paradigm to the existing regulatory maximum for, uh, wood over concrete? Or maybe I'm misreading?
Yeah, so that would be more like five floors, so it would be a little bit taller, so.
Yeah, exactly.
One of the things that, um, one of, uh, the cautions that we had was, 'cause this started out as a Metro Everett thing, and so, uh, when we did the core residential, we, um, in some respects, we were trying to avoid changing standards much in that, and so that's a current standard, it's a forty-five foot height, uh, and so some of these conversations about what would happen outside of Metro Everett, we kind of had thought that that might be a better discussion for code streamlining, and we may even go to the floor, uh, standard outside of Metro Everett as well, kind of, so we were a little bit reluctant to change standards in some of those areas outside of Metro Everett, 'cause we haven't had that public process as much.
Roger that, and so if this is a conversation for a different time, that's, I, I completely understand that, um, so I just wanted to point it out and ask questions.
Yeah, 'cause forty-five feet would probably be a four-floor construction, would be my guess.
Four, four, four floors above concrete or four floors in total?
No, four floors total.
That's what I was thinking as well, yeah.
I had two unrelated questions, um, one, the, there's a slope on, on Rucker, so if you head south and it turns into Evergreen, it slopes up pretty significantly, so are these height limits taking into account an average grade plane, or is it, is there a, is there a point?
These are the same height standards we have in our current code, so, in that area, I don't know.
Yeah, for, for Metro, and not as we get further south in the, uh, core residential area and on page sixteen, those are existing standards that aren't being changed, but within Metro, uh, the height is measured in floors, and that's generally above the, uh, highest point of the sidewalk abutting the property.
Okay, so, in some instances, those buildings will be set into the hillside pretty significantly then, and they'll all reach the same?
Yeah, definitely, uh, because of topography, we'll have different number of floors that you can build, uh, well.
I think the bigger height changes on Rucker is outside of Metro, though.
Yeah, though, those changes on Rucker would definitely be outside of, of the metro zoning, it would be more in the core residential that we were talking about a moment of not changing current standards.
Okay.
And that's measured from average.
But we do have significant slopes just right here down towards the.
Yeah.
And, yeah, that, which makes, uh, depending upon where the alley is located, you know, downhill from the street, uh, or uphill from the street will affect where you put your parking or how, uh, efficiently you can park that building, or, uh, it'll have design impacts, uh, but, uh, you know, those are, uh, measuring by floors rather than by feet will give the designer some flexibility to work with those changes in topography.
Okay, and my, my other question was on page twenty-seven, the, the diagram showing the pedestrian path, um, is there any flexibility at all in terms of redistribution of some widths, um, maybe to give, the, the only thing that comes to mind is, is a restaurant that may want, um, outdoor seating, you know, if six feet isn't really going to give them what they need, could they borrow a little space from that furniture zone and redistribute it to, to their frontage zone, is there gonna be any kind of? Is there going to be any kind of flexibility for uses like that?
Yeah, there, there is some flexibility in there, and then it's also one of the modification of development standards that's allowed as well. So that would go through the city engineer and planning director as part of the approval process.
Mine is, back to building heights. So it's, it's first floor 15, all above that 10?
That's how we measure height, right? It's not a requirement.
Well, then you go to page 14, North Broadway, you've got some 80-foot...
He's referring to the slideshow, the page numbers. Both McGinnon.
Okay. Page 14?
14, yeah. Where we go, 80 feet at the North Broadway?
Uh huh, okay.
And so what's, there's 5 feet of, if the first one's 15, and you put 6 on top of that, you've...
Yeah, so, so one of the challenges of this, so in the Broadway, we're not changing any of the heights or the standards. And so we are, none of those minimum requirements for 15-foot and how we measure floors.
So where's the designated height? Then page 12 will not apply? Okay.
Correct. That's just, these are the standards in Metro. So that's where heights are measured in floors in this area. We do have something, I think the ground floor minimum in the core residential, and I think is in the table, but if I recall right, I think it says...
You think it was 12 feet?
I think it might say none. So, so in the building form, I think it says none for the core residential in that area. So not changing the standards of what we currently have, because there are no standards.
The final one I have, Alan, as cross laminated timber and other new building products become available, you know, to try to fill that gap in affordability between stick frame and concrete and steel, that, they would just, it's their approval at the state building code council, then that would apply. Then I could come in and use those other products.
Right. Whatever building code the state adopts is what the city will have to adopt.
Okay, thank you.
Just a few comments, but back to the draft plan itself. And I, something I thought when you were going through your presentation though, was regarding the allowance of heat pumps and other things within the setbacks. Is there anything for, because some of the complaints that I generally is noise, obviously, and then screening of those facilities, is there any consideration for screening of those types of units or anything like that if they're on the, you know, the ground floor outside within that setback areas or anything like that?
So in the standards, we do have a reference to, that they have to meet the noise standards. So, so there is a requirement for that, they have to meet the noise standards. We do have a screening requirement if it goes into the front yard, so if it's visible from some other space. But we didn't draft any screening in the side or the backyards as a requirement. But quite often, what will happen is to meet the noise requirements, they should probably put up some kind of barrier that would be a screen.
Just a general comment on the maps, and I know this is a draft, but to be able to see those streets a little clearer to identify what the, those areas are in the north and south and all that, and I'm sure they'll, they'll get fine tuned, but just a general comment there.
Well, the other thing is that we do have large-scale maps available online. So if you go there, you can see maps with parcels and streets designated, so you can get a full version online.
On page 9 of the draft, there's the Table 20, which is the minimum lot dimensions. And for the CRA area, it just says, "See underlying zone." Would it be worth citing that section or chapter you can find those regs at for the lot area width, depth, and frontage?
It would, but one of the problems is that there's actually multiple zones in the core residential area. So it's not just, it's one of these unique things where it's called core residential, but it's also over some commercial zone properties as well.
I'm not quite sure what that, on page 11, what that build to percentage means. Is that just that the percentage of the lot, it has to be built to? So you need to cover, so in the UM zone, you got to cover 75% for the front street facade?
Yeah, and that's one that, as you can see, we don't have any illustration, any index there, so we need an illustration to put that. But yeah, if you have 100-foot wide lot, then 75 feet has to be built to that front street, measured at that front line there.
And then on that same page toward the bottom, on B2, when it talks about, and you explained it to me, because I didn't really understand what it was, but in your presentation about these view corridors, it might be beneficial to supply a map of that area too.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that's a good idea.
And then on page 12, the lot setback exemptions, does the P stand for permitted in the table?
Yeah, yes it does, yeah.
Maybe we could clarify that at the beginning of that section there, or, oh, is that the bottom?
At the bottom of the table on page 13.
Oh, okay. I didn't catch that, thank you. The, is there, my question on 13, it talks about signs and marquees and awnings encroaching into the public right of way. Is there going to be any conflicts with the sign code, or you just utilize this to ensure that you're compliant? I just want to make sure that we reference, if there's anything in the sign code that would be a discrepancy. And I know you've already said that this would supersede all that, but it might be something worth looking at.
Yeah, and we'll have some amendments to the sign chapter as well to bring some, some of the sign standards, because otherwise we'll have no sign standard for Metro Everett. So, but really what this does is just, it just makes clear that it's not subject to the setbacks and stuff like that, so as you encroach. And so it's just a clear thing that you don't have to meet setbacks.
Okay. And I'm sure you're going to come across all sorts of conflicts as you try to implement this, which is a very difficult task, and I commend you for your attempt in doing this. On page 14, that illustration 20-3 talks about how building heights are measured, but there's no, you know, it's got the F. I mean, there's, the one on page 22 makes sense, I'm just curious how this image really relates to this section without having some kind of a table that shows you how you measure these things, I guess.
Yeah, that's a, that's a fix too. So, yeah, we've, like I said, we tried to drop some of the initial drawings in as placeholders, but we're, we're working on making some refinements to make the, that, the code more clear.
On page 19, number 2 there, it talks about payment in lieu of affordable housing. What, is it calculated somewhere in here, how much that payment would be?
Yeah, so we, if you look at...
I saw there was something there, it talked about $50,000, you had some example somewhere, but I don't remember where that was.
Yeah, I'm trying to, the payment in lieu of, yeah, so on page 21, the fee in lieu of program, so what we do is have a calculation right there. So right now, we've drafted proposals as what the dollar per square foot would be in the zone.
Gotcha.
So that's another area of checking with the development community on, so.
Maybe we could reference that, so you know where to go to find that. Well, it does, I guess at the end it says fee in lieu of program, and it gives you that section. So never mind that thought. And just a, maybe a word change or something on page 24, the D blank walls, and the last word of that sentence says the department, I don't know if that should say director or department, on the blank walls, that last word there in that sentence. If it's, the department can make the decision, then that's, that's fine too. I think that might have been, oh, the modification section on, so page 37. And you talked about this earlier, so just, just one of my thoughts is whether or not that, under a general, whether that's going to be administrative or public notice requirement, you're still working on how that would be administered.
On that list, yep, yep.
Those are my thoughts. Otherwise, I think you did a great job, and again, I commend you for your attempt to try to implement this type of design standard. Looking forward to seeing what kind of challenges you have, or opportunities you have in review of some of the projects that have actually been completed in downtown, to see how they match up to what you're implementing here. So anyways, great job.
Thank you.
I have to echo that, this is excellent stuff.
Yeah. So Neil's just, to that is, working with our land use staff, where we have, I think, six development projects that are, some have, are in permitting stage or have been developed, or some maybe even conceptual. And so we're, we have the staff each have taken on a project and running through both the parking and this stuff to look for the clarity and the missing pieces and stuff like that. And so we're already getting some good feedback, and so we should have that by next week. And then we'll do some modifications before we send it to the developer forum, and then based on that, we'll have some more input. And so the version that, we'll continue to see some refinements before we get this back to you.
Right. Do you have a date yet for the development forum?
We have a tentative date in a couple of weeks, like 3 weeks from now or something. Yeah, it's coming up.
Yeah, if you could maybe let the commission know, or if that's open to the public or what have you, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, it's, part of it is trying to get some kind of detailed response from folks on some of the provisions, so, yeah.
Is there anyone in the audience who wanted to address the planning commission on this topic? Please come forth, Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Victor Harris. A question on design standards in Article 2, I believe it was. I would like to point out, there is a real need for some green space for animal use around some of the buildings. This indirectly is an ADA issue. The Marriott here behind us, for instance, there's no green space. Guests are really forced to walk about 4 blocks if they have a service animal with them. So that's why I say, it's indirect, I mean, it's not something the ADA mandates, but it's just a consideration that should be in everybody's minds. There's another building down at 2600 Hoyt, that while it has some green space, it has a sign that says pet use is prohibited here. That just kind of goes against the grain of what, why we have these green spaces around some of our buildings. So I'd really like to see that incorporated, so that the people do not have to walk a block, 4 blocks to relieve their animals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to address the commission on this? Seeing none, any other comments?
I just have one quick question. I know a while back, we had talked about, maybe we landed on some place and I completely forgot, but existing owners of property in the, in the metro area, whose property values are expected to go up when the metro plan is done, that would change their overall tax burden, and for, you know, a lot of folks, you know, express, some folks express concern on, you know, being displaced because of that. I know in other municipalities, there was conversations around, the other municipalities had more or less withheld charging those taxes, and then upon transfer to the new owner, the new owner had to pay back those taxes. Have there been any conversations since that initial concern in the planning department, or are we putting that on hold until a later date?
Under Washington state law, there's limits on how you do property taxation, so it's based on market value of it. We do have some tax incentive programs, like the multifamily tax exemption program that will reduce things for development of multifamily. We have reductions for senior housing, you know, things like that. But otherwise, there's no way to, if the market value, if the accessory determines the market value has changed, then that's the value that's placed on there. So there's, there's no ability for Everett to do something different from Marysville, for example. So, you know, I think that there were some initial concerns that, I think that values had changed, you know, but when you, you know, we, we had looked at the details of the existing heights versus the proposed. In large measure, we're not, the only way you can get to some of the taller heights is with the incentives and providing some public benefit. So we're, there are some places where we upzone, but overall, it's not a wholesale change value is significant. I mean, there are a lot of code streamlining and moving the bar, but it's, I really don't think it's, it's that dramatic where we would see values change that much, just on this plan.
Thank you. I just was curious if there'd been any follow-up. I really appreciate the answer.
Any other questions or comments, the staff? Any additional staff business?
Nothing else from staff?
Well, I guess we're adjourned for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you.